Call the meeting order, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call roll please.
Counselor Bolin.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Griswold's absent. Counselor Reese-Camp.
Here.
Counselor Stoudt.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
First thing up is we have the consent calendar. We have the agenda for tonight, February 12th, 2020. Board minutes from Planning Commission, December 18th, Senior Disabled Services Advisory Committee, October 16th, Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, September 18th, October 9th, and the council minutes from January 8th, regular session, and January 22nd, work session.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar for tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Up next, do we have the auditor here?
He's not shown up yet.
Okay, so we're going to skip the auditor at this moment, and we may go back to that, depending on if he shows up, and we'll bring up the Oregon Rain presentation, Corey Wright. And Alicia.
Yes, and Alicia, you get me too.
[laughing].
Hello, I'm Alicia Rogers, Economic Development Catalyst for City of Lebanon, and I'm here to introduce Corey Wright. He is the Venture Catalyst for the Oregon Rain Program. The eight cities have been working with Corey since about June of 2018 to do entrepreneurial ecosystem building in the region, and he's also an entrepreneur himself and is just here to give us an update on what they've accomplished in the last year with Rain.
Thank you, Alicia. Yeah, counselors, mayor, thank you for letting me be here. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but we've covered a lot of good stuff in the last year since I presented to you, so there's good things going on both here in Lebanon and around. So, yeah, Corey Wright, that's my contact information, venture catalyst, not capitalist. So, first of all, just thank you guys for supporting the entrepreneurial ecosystem building that we're doing here in Lebanon and in the community. It's great to have your support. I talk about Lebanon a lot as I'm traveling around advocating for entrepreneurship, and I think what you guys have going on is really great. I'm actually considering moving here, so keep it going, and yeah, you may get one more citizen, or maybe you don't want me, but either way, I love what you guys are doing. So, thanks for your funding and your support, and then also, of course, thanks to all of these communities, private foundations, and the counties for funding our work to help startups in Lynn-Benton. So, all of this makes my job possible and makes all the great things that are happening in our community possible. All right, so I like to say that entrepreneurship is a team sport, or I should say that Victor Hong likes to say that, but I really agree with it, and so these are just some of the many different partner organizations that we work with, and in particular, for Lebanon, I'd like to just highlight the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce, have been working with them over the last year, and I'm really looking forward to hopefully working even more and collaborating and seeing how we can help each other and build the Lebanon startup community. And then also, I just wanted to highlight and thank the new MBVA building. It's been a great spot to meet with entrepreneurs, and they've helped provide meeting spots and things for us to do different events and stuff, so just wanted to give a shout-out to our partners. All right, so as most of you should know, Oregon Rain stands for Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network. Our mission is to catalyze entrepreneurial ecosystems, which I'll chat about in a sec, connect entrepreneurs to resources, and contribute to the creation of prosperous economies. And our vision with that is that, one, we want our communities that we work in to support, value, and celebrate startups. We want regional leaders such as yourselves to understand that entrepreneurs are a primary creator of net new jobs. The Kaufman Foundation and other organizations have done research that shows, you know, the majority of new jobs created in the USA come from companies less than five years old. Now, yeah, bigger companies, jobs move around between them, but in general, in the U.S., we need entrepreneurs starting companies to create jobs and continue to grow our economy. We want small rural communities in Oregon to have thriving economies, obviously, and then most importantly, we want a culture of possibilities to be embraced. So, one of the things that I often say when I meet new entrepreneurs or when I'm teaching them in a class is like, you have to learn to celebrate failure, not be afraid to fail. And likewise, I want communities to be able to celebrate failure for the entrepreneurs, and instead of be like, boo, we don't want to talk about you, be like, hey, it's okay, get back up, try again, let's keep working on this, because it's tough and hard to be an entrepreneur. And so, I just want, I feel like more and more younger generations, you know, we don't want to fail, so we don't take risks, and I'm trying to help people say, it's okay to fail, it's okay to take risk, we're here to support you in that, and you learn from this. So, all right, there's sort of two halves to my work. The first half is ecosystem building, the other half is connecting entrepreneurs. So, there's five things I do on the entrepreneur's side, and that is, we do a lot of different events. I'll talk about some of the ones coming up. We connect entrepreneurs to people, so that could be mentors, that could be co-founders, people with expertise in certain industries. Programs, so that might be a pre-accelerator course or a program that we do, it might be a class at OSU, it might be something that the Small Business Development Center is doing, whatever the entrepreneur needs. Physical assets, let's say that an entrepreneur is trying to start a laboratory, and they can't find any lab space, well, maybe the OSU University can rent them somewhere, maybe LBCC can, or maybe there's a building that Alicia can find, right? Connect them to those resources. And then capital, of course. So, I have experience in crowdfunding, lots of failures and a few successes that helped me sort of speak to that well. And then, in general, we know a lot of the CDFIs, a lot of the investment funds in Oregon, other lending programs, ways that entrepreneurs can get capital. I've also been working on a program to create micro grants for extra underserved entrepreneurs that have financial difficulties but really good ideas, so that they can have a chance to start something. So, a couple of things about venture catalysts, I go, we go where invited, so thank you again for inviting us here. I hope you continue to invite us to be in your community. We don't just show up in a city and start working, but we wait for you guys to invite us. I always try to listen really well and not shit on entrepreneurs. It's like, you don't want to shit, shit, shit on people, and so I try to ask questions versus tell people what to do, because most entrepreneurs have a gut feeling what they should do anyways, but if you ask the right questions, they can come to the answers themselves. We don't take equity or payments, it's completely, you know, free for the community. Try to collaborate with everyone, so again, I look forward to working with chambers and the medical school and all the different organizations that play a part in this ecosystem. And we build entrepreneurial ecosystems. So, what is an entrepreneurial ecosystem? Some people think of like spotted owls and ecosystems or whatever, destroying the lumber industry, right? But what I like to call it is infrastructure for startups. And so, there's sort of 10 components when you think of this infrastructure. The first is government buy-in and policy, and obviously, Lebanon, you guys are a shining star on making it easy for businesses to grow and be here in your community. Human capital and workforce is important, right? Because if startups are creating new products and they need high-tech engineers or manufacturing people or whatever it might be, they need the right talent to help their startups grow. Education and training, mentors and support systems, you know, we do some of that, but then there's also other great collaborators that do that, like the Small Business Development Center and other programs out there. Culture and media, it's really important that local and statewide culture and media really support and celebrate entrepreneurship. Ecosystem leadership, this is where entrepreneurs and other people in the community are taking ownership of what's going on in the startup world, so that I don't have to do everything, and that they're empowered in their own communities to really lead. And I'm excited, because in Lebanon, we have a couple of people that have really started stepping up to the plate, and I'll talk about some of the events that they're helping lead later. Physical assets, I talked about that. Capital. Local and global markets are the products that entrepreneurs are making actually going to be able to sell in the real marketplace, right? Sometimes there can be mismatch between what people are inventing and what the market's ready to buy. And then, obviously, really importantly, is entrepreneurs need to be surrounded by other entrepreneurs and innovators, because you learn from each other and you support each other. So, when I talk about that, and you know, there's that 50%, that's like identifying, doing events, helping entrepreneurs, but then there's this 50% where like, you know, I'm meeting with ambassadors from Senator Wyden's office and saying, hey, pay attention to rural entrepreneurs in Oregon, or going to the state and saying, hey, like, we need to think about rural entrepreneurs and our laws and our policies that we enact, and all these other things that are part of that ecosystem building. So, obviously, the idea is that the entrepreneur is surrounded in a healthy startup community, and they have a better chance of success. This whole ecosystem building thing isn't just an Oregon Rain thing, and I'm happy to send you other links and articles separately from this about it, but it's sort of happening all over the nation. Entrepreneurial ecosystem builders is becoming sort of a real job title. It's relatively new, but lots of communities and Oregon Rain stays in touch with these other communities as well to learn best practices and share with each other. So, how is Lebanon measuring up? So, my boss, Caroline Cummings, Executive Director, made this scorecard, and we've begun sharing it with all the cities that we work in. We do it for each city as well as the actual counties, and I personally, I hate personality type tests and anything that like puts someone in a box. So, as I briefly run through this, and I believe you all have outline of this in your packets, I just want you to keep in mind that I'm open to discuss the score, and if you see something, you're like, why did he put a zero there, or why is there a one there? We have this. That's great, that's a conversation starter, so then I get to learn even more about your community and be better connected, and we can update this. So, you know, not putting anyone in boxes, you guys scored really good, you're only one point underneath Lynn County as a whole, so let's just dig in real quick. All right, so government buy-in, you guys scored great. Government leaders demonstrate a willingness to amend policies and support the ecosystem. Obviously, there's been some changes and different things within the local government, but so far, working with Alicia and everything, it's been great, and you guys seem really amenable to making it, you know, easy for entrepreneurs to start things while still protecting the community. An example of this is Lab Town with the food cart codes that you guys implemented, that Kelly and Alicia did. The entrepreneur told me separately in a meeting, he's like, I really loved what they did, they made it fair, they made it really easy to understand, it wasn't overly restrictive, but it, you know, didn't leave anything out, and so I think you guys are doing good, and I'd love to see that continue.
Corey.
Yes?
When I read that earlier before you came here, one seemed kind of low to me. I, I don't know, I just, I think we've done a lot to encourage business here and entrepreneurship, so I was just wondering why it was a one, not a two or a three?
Yeah, no, that's great, and maybe it should be a two or a three. I guess, and maybe this is where you guys can help educate me, you definitely want businesses here. How often do you amend policies to make it easy for startups to be here, I guess is, are you willing to, like, for example, are you willing to put in an entrepreneurial impact statement, so that every time you adopt new code or new legisla-, or not legislation, new code, you look at, will this impact new startups less than five years old, things like that? So, you're right, maybe it should be a, maybe it should be a two, but that was my perspective so far.
Quite honestly, we haven't been approached on anything like that at all.
Okay.
So, you know, the Slab Town thing, I think, is a good example of us, you know, when it's brought to us, we're willing to work with that.
I think it's a little misleading, as I look at it, a one is includes don't know. I'm assuming that that's a lot of answers where you just don't know.
Yeah.
Or too early to tell. So, I've been doing this work for a year and a half, and ecosystem building takes 20 years sometimes, so, but again, yeah, this is great. Two notes, one, I didn't come up with a scoring system, and I would have done it a little differently. Second note, again, this is supposed to be a conversation starter, so I love this. Human capital, I think there's a lot of talent that exists, but it'd be great to see some more, but that's sort of across the region, we're seeing a lot of businesses having trouble hiring and finding the right talent and the right people for positions because of the low unemployment rate. Workforce training is available, yeah. Education and training exists, the support, yes, you know, it's getting better. People have been there, done that, and with business expertise exist, yes, and it's been great. We're finding more and more mentors to meet with entrepreneurs. We had a mentor mixer a couple of months ago, where it was sort of speed dating style, but we had seven, eight entrepreneurs and eight mentors, and they got five minutes with each other, and after that, they networked, entrepreneurs found their favorite mentor that really spoke to what they were doing, and they were able to like continue relationships with them. Okay, and that was the mentors one. Local media covers stories. I could be completely off-base, and maybe my Google Alerts is wrong, I haven't seen a ton of like entrepreneurship-related posts in local media, specific to Lebanon and the broader region I have, and I know there's pressure over there, so hopefully you guys will correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd love to see just more stuff covering what new entrepreneurs that haven't had success or, and they're just trying things out, see them get promoted and covered. Multiple partners engaged in the ecosystem, yes, and I'd love to see that increase. Entrepreneurs stepped up to champion the ecosystem, as I mentioned, that's doing really well. Physical assets, too, I think it's great that I keep seeing more and more resources as far as spaces coming to your community, and I love that. High net worth individuals interested in learning about angel investing. I'm going to put this one on you guys, I would love to be introduced, when appropriate, to high net worth individuals in your community that might be interested. I'm not pitching them for money, we're not asking them for anything, but just to educate them on what angel investing is for local startups, so that if they're interested, they can begin to engage. Often, high net worth individuals have successful businesses of their own, and they also make really great mentors, and sometimes they're looking for fun activities, so if you know anyone or you're interested yourself, my boss, who's also an angel investor, does some trainings and stuff. We had one in Albany, and it was great to see like the mayor of Philomath was there, and other city leaders were attending that. I'd love to see some of you guys attending those things when you have time as well. Capital being invested, overall in rural Oregon, this is pretty low, but I'm excited with what we have going, that in a few years, we're going to start to see that number go up. Service providers, lots of them, they're engaging. I think the markets and the products that entrepreneurs are making are mostly really compatible, and entrepreneurs, innovators, and creatives asking for support, yes, and we got six new ones that are attending a pre-ex I'm teaching, just yesterday, actually, from Lebanon. All right, so activating Lebanon, that was high, high-level overview. Again, if any of you want to meet with me one-on-one and discuss this more, and I'd love to do that, but based off of that, what I'm focusing on specifically in Lebanon is sort of the people, more talent, identifying mentors, engaging potential angel investors, culture and media, making sure that I'm doing a good job of getting stories and information to them, and also seeing that the community's celebrating that. Local partners, government, continuing to engage with you guys, and I really am excited about how Lebanon's positioned, and I'd love to continue the conversation of like, how do you make this a place that people want to start a company in Oregon, in Lebanon, as compared to Bend or Portland? Because I think, I think you guys have the potential with your closeness to I-5 and your closeness to the mountains, and you're really great supportive community, and like the fact that it's fairly easy to set up shop here, so, and then education, oops, sorry, education and training is, obviously, we'll continue to do that, and, yeah. So, any questions about that before I get into just a few metrics about Lebanon, and I promise I'm almost done? All right. Okay, so, I've been a pretty busy guy since June 2018, since I got hired. So, since then, 167 entrepreneurs identified, 94 of those rural. 102 of them have been active with the programs that I've been doing in the last six months. 89 events and activities completed, close to 1,000 attendees I've been able to activate, so not just identify, but get mentors to engage with entrepreneurs, 20. 12 potential angel investors identified, would love to get that number up, and 260, it's got to be more than that, actually, but 260 stakeholders that I've measured so far engaged. Lebanon-specific, 35 entrepreneurs identified, 15 are currently engaging with Oregon Rain programs, and that number is now like 20 or 21 because of the new entrepreneurs that just signed up for our pre-accelerator program. 28 events and activities, two mentors, and two potential angel investors, more in the broader region of Lebanon, sort of on the outskirts, but identified. So, really great stuff happening. You, of all the rural communities that we're serving, like you guys have the most activity going on, it's really exciting. Here's a few of the events that we did. This was like a marketing pub talk where we had someone from Oregon, what are they called now, Oregon State Community Create Union, or Oregon Community Create Union? OSCU, come and share about marketing tips. This was the mentor mixer I mentioned, over at the lobby, where we had tables that were numbered, and entrepreneurs got to walk around to the different tables and talk to mentors. This is that example I mentioned of entrepreneurs sort of taking, taking the lead and starting things. So, this is, it's called Startup Cafe, and basically, entrepreneurs meet every two weeks in Mugs Coffee, and they keep each other accountable by helping each other solve business problems, and then at the very end, they do I-will statements, and they say, I will do, and they make smart goals that are like specific, measurable, attainable, time-related, all of that, and then they come back in two weeks, and they say, hey, did you do your goals? And if they didn't, they put like 10 bucks in the pot, and then they like buy each other dinner at the end of it. So, in the back, the two ladies, Jeanne Lanning and Cindy Sekaguchi, they've been really active in helping sort of organize and keep it going. I was there for the first few and got it started, but now I get to just check in here and there occasionally every month, and see how they're doing, and they're keeping it going, and they're actually meeting tomorrow morning if anyone wants to come hang out and stay accountable for your business goals, so. And then finally, the cool thing about that group is, on their own accord, there's a mentor from Monroe that was coming over and just helping them at the cafes, and then like he was talking about this idea called storyboarding, so of their own accord, without me like saying, hey, you should do this, they like put together an event to where he could teach them storyboarding for your business, and I was just like, great, I bought them pizza, and they did that. So, it's really cool to see local entrepreneurs taking initiative of like, hey, let's build our own startup community in Lebanon. All right, so what's next? Going to try to continue to identify, or will continue to identify entrepreneurs, obviously more mentors and volunteers, continue working on activating early-stage capital. I still often meet entrepreneurs in rural Lynn County that don't even have access to a computer, and I feel like that is like a basic theme, to do market research, to build a website, whatever, and so I've been working with a nonprofit called Nerds Abroad to create something called empowerment grants. Nerds Abroad is a weird name, they're going to be changing it, but essentially, looking at like 600, $1,000 micro grants plus laptops or other technology, so that entrepreneurs who are working with a venture catalyst or an SBDC advisor or some other qualified businessperson can have a chance to even start a business. Educate more stakeholders, obviously, that's part of why I'm here, and then also importantly, raise additional funding to bolster the work. You saw how many entrepreneurs I have, you saw how much stuff is going on. I'm stretched thin, I just had a little baby, she's four weeks old, my wife would love me to be home right now, and it's great, you know, when we first started this work, we were like, what are we going to find? Are we going to find 20 entrepreneurs, or are we going to find 100? And we found, you know, 150-something, and so now, we want to scale this work and keep taking advantage of what we've done to date, so that we can see that long-term impact. Because again, I'll remind you, you know, this isn't like, you find entrepreneurs and all of a sudden they're making money and providing new jobs in a year, this takes time. Nike didn't hire their first employees till like year three or so, right? And that was just like one part-time, it was probably the founder. So, again, we want to, my boss is hoping to find another 100K in funding to hire another part-time venture catalyst, so that we can go deeper into the work that we're doing. Okay, so this is the pre-accelerator we're doing, we had 23 startups apply, 21 are actually doing it. There's 11 that met here in Lebanon yesterday, and another like 10 that met in Philomath on Monday. Six of them are from Lebanon, but the cool thing is, like, the word's getting out, and there are also startups that are driving down from like Salem and independents that are like hearing about this, and they're coming to Lebanon and Philomath to be a part of the entrepreneurial community you guys have. So, that's really exciting, I wanted to have pictures to share, but I had to get these slides to you before the event started. But the biggest thing that I want to leave you with, other than my ask to you, is to mark your calendars, I gave you guys all some spreadsheets, we recently changed this from an evening event to an entire afternoon event, that's going to be highlighting rural entrepreneurship for the entire state. We have commissioners, city leaders, federal and state representatives, and senators that are going to be attending. Business Oregon's interested, some of the biggest VC venture firms from the Portland and Bend area are going to be coming down and judging, and this is going to be at Boulder Falls in Lebanon, right here. We're doing it to highlight Lebanon and all the great things that's going on in your community, since we did it last time in Philomath, and it's going to be, it's going to be a riot. Think of like Shark Tank, but rural and way nicer judges. I'm working on raising prizes, last year, we had like $6,000 in cash and in-kind prizes that went to the winning startups. I convinced Boulder Falls to let me have our own food and beverages, so what we're doing is we're having eight-foot tables for local startups in the food and beverage industry, so they can share their food and all the things that are happening, so it's going to be really awesome. I'm super excited about this. I'm working on engaging local sponsors right now, from your community and beyond, so please save your calendars. The pitch part starts at 2, but the broader rural entrepreneurship starts, or sorry, the pitch part starts at 6, but the broader conference starts at 2, and we'll be having some keynote speakers and some other really cool things. So, promise, this is my last slide, my ask to you, please continue to connect me to entrepreneurs, mentors, and investors. Please engage in the broader Lynn-Benton startup community events. It's really cool when like someone from city council or from the local government shows up at this, and you're seeing other community leaders that are there as well, because it signals to the state and to the other bigger players, Albany, Brevales, that you guys really care about this and that you're actively engaged, and it helps your communities. Continue to invest in ecosystem building, and just as a reminder, again, I'm so excited for where Lebanon is going, and I think, in addition to obviously recruitment, expansion and retention, and tourism, if you can really be strategic and focus on making your city a place for entrepreneurs and innovators to thrive, it's going to really repay over long-term with just all the different things that are happening here. So, that's all I have for you. Thanks for letting me be here tonight, sorry it was so long. Any other questions?
Interesting stuff, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Corey.
You very much.
And Alicia, thank you.
You're welcome.
And next up, we'll have Steve Teshir, our auditor. Presentation?
I know. Well, I sort of feel like I'm glad I was late, so I got to listen to that. On the other hand, my presentation is going to pale in comparison, so. And I, you know, my, I'm always listening, I'm like, Nerds Abroad, wait a minute, nerds right here, and here. Come on. I know. So, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be the auditor again this year. The audit went very well. This guy right here is a rock star in the accounting world, he does a great job, he has had his hands full this year, no question about it. We are continuing to clean up some of the rather challenging accounts from the past. You'll see in the report towards the end of the notes, there are a couple more prior period adjustments that we're working on getting things cleaned up. Specifically, not anything to do with budgetary stuff so much as some of the full accrual accounts that are part of the report. And just to be specific about that, if you, if you're curious at all what some of those full accrual accounts are that are more than a little bit challenging, on page 15 of the audit report, statement of net position, I mean, what I'm going to do is just go through the report rather quickly, because I don't want to spend a lot of your guys' time. Mostly, I want you to know that the audit went well, and the financial statements that you're looking at, as the audit report itself says, is these financial statements are without any material misstatement, so you can rely on them to be accurate. Just a quick overview of the format of the financial statements, before this, page 15 are, is the MD&amp;A, Management Discussion and Analysis, kind of a summary statement of all of the activities of the city. This statement and the next one are what we call the Full Accrual Government-Wide Financial Statements. Full accrual means that there are, all of the assets and liabilities of the city are reported here. And the next page, the Statement of Activities, is a report of all of the activities of the city that are represented by accrual basis accounting. Where things have been earned, they're recognized as revenue, where an expense has been incurred, it's recognized as an expense, rather than when things are paid or received. So, on this page, 15, there are things like the court finds receivable, the third item down, that is a significant challenge to come up with a net amount receivable, because you, I don't know, the total on the books is still somewhere around 2 million.
1.5, 1.5.
Yeah, one and a half million. A lot of those have been on the books for a long time, and likely to never get collected. So, what we try and come up with is a reasonable amount that will be collected to report here, and that's what this 200,000 is. And that's what this 200,000 is. But one of your challenges this year might be to actually write off some of that. It's one of the things that in any business, and if you look at this as a business financial report, receivables that aren't likely to be collected should just be removed from the books. What we have here is the net, the amount that we suspect will be collected over the life of those receivables. That's one thing that's always challenging.
Steve, excuse me, that amount that you came up with, that 201, was that from past experience, from what we've seen in the past?
Yeah, it's generally what's actually collected during the last year. It's roughly that, anyway. And again, it's not, there's no fine science or any specific amount, it's a best estimate based on the past.
Okay.
Dropping down to the last couple of items in the asset section, capital assets, you will see some great big numbers there. Much of what's there is assets that have been depreciated a lot, and these values are net of depreciation. So the total amount of assets is described in the notes to the financial statements, but these are the net amounts. There are quite a few assets that are listed on the list of capital assets that we really need to examine about how many of them are still part of the useful assets of the city. Things like, oh, fencing, for example, in someplace, or one of the bigger ones on the government activity side is infrastructure. Streets and roads is included in this. That's a hard thing to put a value on. And there are two, essentially, two different methods that we can use to do that. One is the actual cost minus some depreciated amount, and the other is to go out and measure all the cracks in the street and figure out how much that's devalued the cost or the value of the asset otherwise. Neither are fine science, obviously, and those are some great big numbers there that you see. They ultimately impact what the city's total net position is rather significantly. They're big estimates. Let's see, the PERS liabilities, pension liabilities, and OPEB obligations that you see down, there are several different accounts related to that in the liabilities. The deferred inflow section and the deferred outflow section, some pretty big numbers. And if there's an estimate out there that is more wildly swinging than those, I don't know what it would be. Back in the notes, there's a little table there that shows what that estimated liability value would be if the discount rate that's used to calculate these was changed 1% up or down. It's amazing how big that 1% change in the discount rate impacts these values, and just as an indicator of how much of an estimate these numbers really are. So this schedule here, it's as good of an effort of coming up with a reasonable set of estimates as often is not for presenting in financial statements. And it, again, it's presented with the intention of kind of presenting the city as a business. A rather difficult thing to do, but any of you that have been involved in any kind of business financial reporting knows, a lot of estimates end up even in business reports, because you're dealing with the estimated value of capital assets, the estimated value of your receivables. And it's important to recognize that with these statements. Any questions about that report at all, or these two reports? The next pages, the revenues and expenditures, or expenses, related to the different, the two different sets of activities that the city's broken into. Governmental activities and basically the utility funds otherwise. So the next several sets of financial statements are what we call the Fund Financial Statements. They are based on a modified accrual basis of accounting. From these next four statements, actually, the capital assets and the long-term debt have been eliminated. They come fairly close to representing budget basis accounts. And what you have is balance sheet, and then on the page behind the balance sheet, reconciliation schedule, that if you're absolutely crazy, you'll want to look at that and go, so that's how you get from fund, or from modified accrual basis to full accrual basis. That's what the next, the schedules, the reconciliations present. You'll see all kinds of things there, and all kinds of descriptions of why they're there. But this is the kind of stuff that makes these financial statements a little bit difficult to digest. And I would be more than happy to help you digest that, but I don't want you to end up with an upset stomach either, so. So we can move on. There's a couple of statements on page, starting on page 21, that are the proprietary fund financial statements. And just to mix it up nicely, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has, for a long time now, told us that these financial statements related to the proprietary funds need to be on a full accrual basis of accounting. And so they reflect what's, these numbers, if you look at the totals columns, they'll be the same exact numbers that are on that statement and that position that we just looked at. They roll straight over. So there are no reconciliation statements for them. Any questions about any of that? I can go over numbers and values if you like. I don't know that you want to hear me talk for that long, but it's fascinating stuff if you're a nerd. If not, then just moving quickly, I always like to point out the challenges that we have in describing all the different disclosure things that have to be in the notes. And so, starting on page 42, and going all the way to page 59, so 17 pages of disclosures, fascinating reading about the PERS liability and the other post-employment benefit, OPEB On page, let's see if I can find it real quick. On page 49, that little schedule I mentioned before about the 1% change in the discount rate, at the top of page 49, in the middle of that table, 9,476,000. You can see on either side how much that liability, that's the pension liability amount in the middle that we used on the financial statements. Either side of that is how large that number changes depending on a 1% change in the assumed value for the discount rate. Pretty substantial.
Massive.
So that gives you an idea, again, of those estimates and what we're dealing with there. The last thing I kind of wanted to just throw out there for you is that all of the budgetary schedules start back on page 64. And because you guys have, like, 60-some funds, that goes all the way, those budgetary schedules go all the way back to about page 133. So each fund gets its own schedule there. I was just asking Matt while we were sitting back there, is he going to attempt to reduce some of the number of funds that you guys have with a proposed budget? And he mentioned that he was thinking that we might be able to get rid of about 10 of them. I think you could easily get rid of 10. You guys win the prize for the most number of funds that I audit, let's put it that way. There are, there are some guidelines in Governmental Accounting Standards that say that you should only have the number, the minimum number of funds that you actually need to be in compliance with regulations and rules. Most cities the size of Lebanon have maybe 20 funds. And so, anything you can do to consolidate some of that stuff, merge them in with the general fund, I think it would make it easier to manage some of those activities. It would certainly be easier to get through the budget every year, right? So you have my full support on whatever you can do to reduce your, the complexity of the fund structure, for sure. The other thing that I wanted to mention just briefly is each one of the long-term debts that you guys have, and there are, I believe, 18 of them, somewhere in that neighborhood, they are described in summary in the notes to the financial statements, and then in the back of the financial statements in detail, so that each year's payments are detailed You have eight of them, actually, eight out of those 18 will actually be paid off in the next three years. So that's something to look forward to. And I know Matt wants to get deeper in debt. No, he doesn't. It is, one of those, long-term debt is very, very useful in a lot of ways in helping development. Like, a lot of your bonds and notes are related to urban renewal efforts. You can't go wrong with that, as far as I'm concerned. And of course, the water and sewer utility, restructuring the plants and systems. So, you know, debt isn't always a bad thing, but it's kind of nice to get some of those little ones paid off and have a lot less to manage in that regard. But they are all detailed out in the back here. I could go on and on, but...
Hey, Matt, question. How many funds have we reduced since you've been here? Because I know we've been working on that for several years.
We haven't done a lot of reduction. I think the only one that I can think of at this point was the school resource officer, where we were literally taking money in and then transferring it to the general fund. And I said, why don't we just put that in the general fund? It's been something that we've discussed, and I've been working with department directors to understand their, I don't know if I'd say feelings behind it, but trying to make sure that I understand how they're using the different funds in different ways. For the most part, we have directors that manage the budgets out of different funds. And so, combining them, at some point, they pushed back, saying, you know, that's going to screw up how we track this. And I've said, well, there's other ways that we can track it. It's just coming to discuss with them how we're going to do that. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, by the time we've cleaned up and done, got the audit complete, we've been straight into budget season with not a lot of time to make changes. So I know Ron and I have discussed different areas already where we can either combine some to eliminate some, move things straight into the general fund on certain areas. So that is something that will happen during the budget this year.
Good. Thanks.
Not to put any pressure on you.
Yeah. It's one more thing on your plate.
Yeah, one more thing. I will just leave it at that. If there are any other questions that I can answer or concerns, I'd be happy to attempt to address them at this point.
I appreciate you getting us the report ahead of time this time, that really helped. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad to be able to do that. And, you know, it's one of those challenges, especially with all these full accrual adjustments and everything, to get this set of financial statements done, and before the December 31st deadline, we got an extension again this year, and I apologize for that. I will say that my staff, my team, we went from six people to 12 people this last year. And we are auditing about 50-some cities, school districts, and actually now audit Lake County. And it was, we almost bit off more than we could chew this last year. And you never know, it's like opening Pandora's box sometimes. Okay, what have we got in here? And sometimes it's a little bit surprising, and requires a little bit more work than necessary. But it had nothing to do with this young man's ability to get ready for us. He did a great job, had a lot of work schedules and work papers presented to us and organized in a way that we don't usually see. So he's a keeper, you guys, don't let him go. I really appreciate his effort, and he's easy to work with, and just does a great job, so.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you both.
Well, Steve, thank you very much, and Matt, thanks for all your work, and thanks for your work on the budget.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night. And by the way, you guys, hats off to you for volunteering to do this.
Thank you.
You guys are starting to look like familiar faces here.
That's great.
But I appreciate your volunteerism, it's great. Take care.
Okay. Next up, public comment section. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony card prior to speaking and handing it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. Council might take an additional two minutes to respond. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. And first up, I have Kay Cortez. Hi, Kay.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Hello, I am Kay Cortez. I will keep this short for you, but I do ask for your understanding of my concern today. I reside on the corner of the Rodeo Denderin and 8th Street. It has appeared over time, the traffic on 8th has not only increased due to a new construction on the south end of 8th Street, but the traffic not only has increased as of today, however, the cars passing by continue to increase in their speed with some traveling well over 25 miles an hour, as it should be. I have witnessed close calls of cars entering on 8th Street, not recognizing a car coming down 8th Street is exceeding the speed limit, and has nearly been T-boned. I, myself, as my family and friends, now must utilize much greater caution as we enter onto 8th Street. I was pleasantly surprised on the morning of January 27th, driving out of my driveway at 6:30 a.m. going to physical therapy, to find a motorcycle officer patiently waiting for a potential speeder. He also added great value through his visibility of passing motorists to maintain their speed on 8th Street. I was able to share in conversation with the officer my appreciation and the fact that I had spoken at a prior city council meeting about the issues of speeders on 8th Street. And he said, go back to the city council meeting. And I said, I was going to go back, and here I am today. I am here to request the city to consider additional options to control the speed of motorists on 8th Street. Continued visibility of patrol units, including motorcycles, is effective, but not financially feasible, nor realistic for a permanent improvement. We have had the speed monitor placed on 8th Street several times, and it doesn't help, but it is truly short-lived. I would like to request more regular utilization of this device until a permanent solution is designed. I personally believe the installation of larger speed bumps, like we have today in a manufactured home neighborhood further south and north off of Vaughan Lane... in the manufactured home neighborhood further south and north off of Vaughan Lane. Identical speed bumps have appeared in many cities, including Albany, and have become a great deterrent against those speeding through the neighborhoods. I am concerned for the safety of those residing in my neighborhood. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to future connections with the city. Thank you respectfully, Kay Cortez.
Thank you, Kay.
And I'm gonna give this to Kim. I'm gonna sign it. And this is twenty-four seven, this goes on all day with people, people going north and south on Eighth Street. And I, when I drove out of my driveway that morning, I looked to my right, and there he was sitting, and I couldn't thank him enough. I said, I don't know how many times I've asked somebody to come out here to sit and watch. And he was sitting right in front of our front yard. And I thanked him for it. I think something needs to be done about it, because there's people that, kids that walk to school in the morning and go for breakfast. People are crossing the street in the morning. These people don't slow down.
Hey, Chief, did you have any updates on that, um, on Eighth Street? Like when, when he's, they've done patrol down there, how things have gone, or what they found?
No, I, I'm not in front of you.
Nothing specific?
Yeah.
I know what she's talking about, and, you know, our, our motor officers work, um, on shift, so it's kinda hit and miss when they can actually go out and be on the motor and enforce, um, traffic as, as we would like. But, um, when we can, we get out there as much as we can. Uh, and I don't know about the speed study that was done. I don't know, Ron, if you know?
I'm, I'm not sure there was a speed study done on Eighth.
Okay, a traffic study, is that what you're, you're saying? A traffic study or a speed study, is that what you said?
No, they put a monitor out there, but that's not gonna stop them, saying, okay, you better slow down, this is where the speed you're going to slow down.
Oh, the truck with the sign, yeah.
Oh, the trailer.
It's only been out there.
Yeah, yeah.
And that doesn't actually record anything?
Doesn't help any.
Yeah. But, but as far as enforcement action goes, I mean, um, we're all throughout the city trying to accommodate and trying to enforce, um, speeders, cause I, I, I know it's a problem, and, and I agree, people need to slow down and start paying attention. Couldn't agree with you more.
And it's not twenty-five, it's not thirty, it's not forty, it's fifty, sixty, they don't slow down, period.
Unfortunately, it's like that in several different areas of the city, um, but...
South Main Road.
And, yeah, like I said, I, I mean, we could sit here and rattle off several neighboring streets that, and it's the same issue. And I'm not here to disagree, I, I understand the frustration, and what I can say is, we try to get out there as much as we can to enforce those, those regulations and those laws. But as far as us being out there, I couldn't sit here and tell you, I don't know what the outcome of us in, in, in that area is. I'd have to go back and look, but I can certainly do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Bill Sullivan. Good evening, Bill.
My squawk is about the tennis court on Fifth and Rose. What are they gonna do with that? There's people that stopped that wanna play, the gates are locked, and they don't seem to be gaining any headway. And they've wasted enough money on them porta-pots on Sixth Street that they could've went in and completely redone that tennis court.
So, I think they're waiting on, to finish up this spring, for the restroom to be installed? Is the restroom not installed?
Restroom's already installed.
So the porta-potties, where are the porta-potties at?
I meant prefab. The prefab drawn on Sixth Street. The one that you brought in, all of that heavy equipment to pick 'em up and set it on?
Right. Those are actually, those are, that's our standard bathroom for a park.
Right, well, there's no problem with that, but the money that was wasted, to my notion, when they set that in there, you could've hired a local contractor or had the city crew do it cheaper than with the prefab.
No, not, not, not even in the same ballpark. They're about half the price.
Boy, they must work a hell of a lot cheaper than outfits I ever worked for.
Yeah, they're, they're...
But, that, uh, tennis court's been tore up about the same time you started on that prefab restrooms over there.
Yeah, I'll have to talk to Jason. I know they had issues with the contractor that was there, and I'm not sure where that's at right now.
But there's been people stopped there, tried to get in, and the gates are locked, so I don't know where they go to play tennis if they do it all.
Yeah.
But, my personal opinion, you wasted enough money on that prefab restroom down there, you could've completely done this tennis court. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next up, Cassie Cruz, Lebanon Downtown Association.
I like to think you save the best for last. Hello, everybody. Cassie Cruz is Downtown Association. So, I guess I will start by kinda giving you guys an update, what's kind of happened with some of our downtown businesses. Sadly, we recently had a business that was around for twenty-seven years, closed its stores. Um, Downtown Dog, their last day was on the 31st, uh, and then we had Frill and Threads, they were open for about three years, and they closed their doors or sold their business. And then Frill and Threads, Jenny Groves, uh, family's business, they ended up having more children and less people to run the store, so they turned it over to a family who, uh, opened Amber Moon Boutique. So that currently has a business residing yet, so it was a quick turnover, but, and we still have another retailer down there. So sadly, we saw one of our restaurants go, uh, under, that had been around for quite some time, but their last hurrah was, uh, celebrated by all. Um, kinda, I guess, uh, from a standpoint of thinking of our community as a whole, um, it's sad to see an establishment like that go under, because that served a lot of our, um, those in our community who probably are on, uh, social security, maybe Medicare, their pricing was adequate for almost anyone to kinda go in and get a hot dog. Um, so it is kinda sad, I may, may, their following may have been, uh, an older generation, that may have been able to go out once every, maybe one month, you know, according to their budget. Um, so, I guess my challenge is to the city and to the rest of Lebanon residents is, you know, we have a 2040 vision that wants a thriving downtown, and part of that is, we have to shop downtown, we have to partake in downtown. So I would hate to see a business go under because people weren't, you know, patrolling it enough. Um, so during Christmas, during those holidays, please, go to our retailers, go to our, you know, go to our shops, get to know them as, as we all should be doing. Um, and especially get to know the new people who own Amber Moon Boutique, um, the really nice Brittany and Jennifer, uh, mother-daughter duo, so, really great people. But, to go on with the rest of, uh, LDA, what's gone over the last month, our promotions committee, as you all know, kicked off First Fridays for Love Chocolate. We were able to bring on our own chocolatier, uh, with Victorian Chocolates, Kelly. He donated a hundred and seventy-five pieces of chocolate. That goes about forty-five minutes into it, it's all gone. So, just let you know. Uh, but luckily, our retailers were ready for that, and they had other goodies, uh, for participants, uh, so that went really well. We had probably about over a hundred and thirty participants, I believe, they had almost all the, uh, passports that they printed to go out, so they had a pretty good attendance. Uh, you never know, with it now going all year round, minus January, how it was gonna turn out, and it's done well. Uh, next month, we've partnered with the Lebanon Library, in the sense of, they've lent us, lent us their Cat in the Hat costume, because First Friday for March is, uh, is to focus on literacy, yeah, of course, celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday, which I think all of us have loved and enjoyed, um, and had enough tongue-twisters in our life from that. Uh, so we're doing Happy Birthday, Dr. Seuss, and of course, I think Brain Candy, one of our downtown retailers, who has excellent teas and books, has given us five boxes of books that we could give out to participants and, uh, for the kiddos. I'll have more details, you can find those on Facebook and whatnot. Uh, one of the partnerships I'm looking forward to, because as I've said before, it takes, makes many hands to make work light, is the partnerships we're having for our First Fridays this year and a lot of our other events, um, we have coming up. One of the ones I'm excited about, uh, because I sit on the Art Commission as well, is we're partnering, uh, between the Art Commission and Downtown Association for our auction, our silent auction that we have for the sculptures and for the art boards. Um, kind of, I know you guys approve all those, but kind of in the past, I'm sure all of you write them, but, you know, we've, we've, uh, piggybacked onto other events, as far as the Art Commission with those, uh, silent auctions, but during events that our participants are already, like, keyed into Strawberry Festival, so they weren't there to, you know, not everyone got to take away, they were there to watch the parade. You know, a Brew Fest for the turkeys limited some individuals because it was a drinking event, um, plain and simple. Um, so we're trying to find ways that we can make sure we're being inclusive to everyone, and to make it an event that people are there to shop, people are there to have fun and to be very downtown. So, we're kind of bringing ourselves together between, uh, LDA and Art Commission to have, uh, that, that silent auction be for September Block Party, uh, First Fridays. So, of course, more to come way down the line on that one, but that will be another fun one I'm looking forward to, to see happen and come through. Uh, our design committee is working up on our Community Cleanup Day, which was formerly known as Community Pride Day. Um, our board, um, has recently changed it to Community Cleanup Day, um, just for the fact of, for the effectiveness for Google searches. Um, and we wanna make sure when new people are coming in the area and they know what's going on, they're knowing exactly what we're doing, um, in that, so we are now, it's just our Community Cleanup Day. And we, our goal, of course, isn't just to focus on the downtown, but Lebanon abroad. Um, and so with that, we've, last year, we had Be Undivided In, who helped us cover all the schools, as we've done in the past. They're coming on board again this year for that Cleanup Day. Um, we're getting, uh, or we're actually gonna be having, uh, Build Lebanon Trails a part of this event, so they will help in that trail cleanup. So instead of, you know, a bunch of us trying to be everywhere, we're bringing the different arms together to make the greater impact on that. So that's what they have going on, and then, uh, let me see, anything else? And that's really kind of what I've had overall. I'll be in, uh, the April, um, meeting, I will have a full presentation with all our breakdowns and numbers, what we did last year, volunteerism, and, uh, I'll have more updates on everything else, but I'm not gonna take too much of your pride, I'm probably, excuse me, time, I got your pride. Let me know if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Oh, the turkey, uh, auction, that'll be it?
Mm-hmm.
And I've been on the move.
I appreciate you.
We did that last year. Um, I just wanted to comment, and I told a couple people, but I don't know if you guys got it, uh, the time of that is not good, because it's before everybody gets there.
Right.
And it was so early that people were just getting there and just going, oh, the turkeys are all gone, they're all...
Right.
So that's a good point to maybe not that event, or...
Yeah.
I would suggest later in the evening or afternoon.
And that's what it's gonna be.
Because some people have their beers.
Yes. Well, it won't be, it won't be, uh, we're not gonna have it at Brew Fest this year. We're gonna tack it on to, we're gonna do just, uh, complete, uh, between the sculptures and the art boards, we're gonna have one event at the First Friday for September in the Strawberry Plaza with music, so...
I just wanna mention that.
I appreciate that, and that was why, because it is, it is a hard one, and that, and some people were discouraged because it does, you know, there's, it's an alcoholic event, uh, geared around that, so, that's all, but...
I was trying to think of a big thing to add.
It was difficult, yeah, and then you have, you know, someone coming in telling you they have enough room for people to walk through, you're just trying to get set up, I don't know who that is, but I will point, um, but yeah. Anyway, thank you so much, Paul.
So, if you auction them off in the beginning of September, you'll fill the boards up before those events, right?
Well, we have our boards switching out every, we're supposed to have them every few months, but I think everyone may have seen, we haven't had some boards in the last couple of months. Some of the ones we have commissioned have not came back to us, um, so we have a few more boards, two boards will be coming back, so it will only be the boards from the 2019 year.
Okay.
So the one that, I'm not gonna mention which one it is, but there's one that I really want, and then you can have it, I'm gonna hide it. Uh, but yeah, so we'll have only a few boards instead of the full twelve, um, yeah. But we're, cause we'll keep cycling those through.
There'll still be some up.
Yeah, there'll still be some up, yeah.
And just a side note on the Arts Commission, Lee and I will be interviewing people next month, I think, for the art, for the opening on the Arts Commission.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys, appreciate you.
Okay, next up, we have a session on adoption of city manager's profile, Angela.
Angela Salisbury, HR Director for the city. I am here to get the approval and adoption of the profile, which is basically the recruitment material for the city manager, and the job description, which I have noted, we need to update the mayor information, although the job description didn't get updated, we need to get your name on there, mayor. And, uh, so once we have these approved, we'll get those over to Proffman, and they will get the posting out there, and we will start getting in our applicants.
That looks pretty good, looks like they include most of the stuff that everybody knows here. Is there any, um, anything that's out of the, uh, all the groups? I like what Ron mentioned, pretty much some of the same things that were in there about the city, and some of the basics, that doesn't really change.
Yeah.
But it's a good, and it's a good promotion, I'm sure, actually.
The Star Spangled Celebration no longer happens, I mean, it's a, or is it?
It's possible.
Okay.
We did add the word occasionally on that sentence, just in case it happened again, so right towards the end of that sentence.
Oh, there it is, okay. Very good.
Any other comments?
I thought the content was pretty much all there.
I agree.
I'd move for approval of the documents.
Second.
I'd move second to approve the adoption of the city manager's profile. All the documents are out.
Hi.
There's one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, what I have before you tonight is the, uh, I'm calling it the Phase Two of the Phase Five. Kinda weird here. The Phase Two of the project design for Phase Five of the West Side Interceptor Project. Basically, what we did the last time, we broke this up into two, we weren't sure we were gonna do as big a, uh, project as we were. Uh, the first phase, which, uh, is pretty much designed, was, uh, from Oak Street to Walker Road and Stolt Hill. This contract here that we're looking at, uh, would take that from Stolt Hill and Walker Road all the way down to Crowfoot and, uh, Hillview, uh, is the design that we're doing with this one. Trey and I have looked at this back in, uh, when we did the original, uh, contract with, with UDL Engineering, and ORS allows us to direct a point without going through an RFP process for somebody that's got intimate knowledge, I guess is probably one of the best ways to put that. Uh, Brian's done a lot of the design, has all the data, and of course, he did the first phase of this, and he's done several other phases of this, so, uh, it just makes sense for him to continue that on, and I believe that's a, a big cost savings to the city as well, without having to get somebody else up to speed on that. So with that, this will put the entire design together, um, and on a side note, we've turned in a lot of our, uh, environmental stuff, our cultural resources has been turned in to DEQ, uh, we've done our engineering tech memo, um, basically giving the need for the project, and hopefully we'll have, be started on the permitting process and a loan agreement for the council to sign sometime in April or into March. So, that's the direction we're headed. And with that, I can answer any questions, but I would recommend approval of the contract for a hundred and eighty thousand, five sixty.
Ron, you, uh, I, I would guess that there's a substantial savings by going this route.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You have a number, or?
I hate to even throw a number out, um, you know, without...
Substantial.
But it, it, it's a big savings. Brian's done, he's had all the, the, the survey.
Yeah.
He did the original survey for this entire alignment, uh, plus he's got other surveys that he's able to throw together, that he's done this work, and to mention, he's got, you know, the design of the first phase, so he can roll right into it, and, um...
It's a local business.
So, let me give you an idea of what a typical, so, a typical design of a project, let's say we're gonna do a twenty million dollar project, you're looking at ten percent. That's your design fee. So, then we look at what we've got here and, and, um, the fact that we work real well together, and, now, keep in mind, city staff's doing, doing some of the, uh, the spec writing and stuff like that, so this is just, just for drawings, uh, which we can do the specs in-house. Um, so, yeah, if you take in twenty, you know, like, if you take our water treatment plant, we had, I don't know what the percentage was, it was around eleven percent, so, if you said ten percent, that's two million dollars on a twenty million dollar project, we'll have somewhere around five to six hundred thousand in design by the time we're done. And that includes all the environmental consultants as well, so...
Great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
I'd move the second to approve the West Side Interceptor. I'd move second to approve the West Side Interceptor project. All those in favor say aye.
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 Does oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, Ron.
Yes.
Number three, adoption of SDC financing.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hello there.
I'm back. So, since I've been here, we've been financing SDCs. The rate upon which we finance them, I don't know where or why it started to be this way, but it was whatever we were getting out of the local government investment pool, plus 1%. Currently, we have approximately $1.5 million in financed SDC charges. When we have financed SDC charges, we can't spend the money, and the complication of tracking, invoicing, collecting, or not collecting those fees is a substantial amount of work. And we don't cover our cost with the 1% above our investment rate. I've talked with other jurisdictions and discussed with them, how do you guys do this? Do you do it? There were a number that said they just don't do it. There were a number that said they do it, and some charge a flat rate. Sweet Home, for example, charges a 10% flat rate. What I've seen most is they peg it to prime, and then they add something on top of it. So, that's kind of what I've come to recommend, is that we update what we charge in interest rates on our SDC financing, so that we charge a prime rate plus 3%. We're not a bank. We don't have the technology, the software, to efficiently bill people when they are doing a loan agreement. It's also very hard if we do an SDC to collect the money if it's not new construction. And I think, if you look back to probably when this first started, I'm assuming this was probably meant for people that have a failed sewer or a failed well that are then trying to connect to the city services without putting them out to, hey, you've got to go try and find some money, and they don't have any money. We're seeing a lot of use of this from developers, and developers aren't going to go away just because we don't finance their SDC costs. They're going to include it in their construction loans and go forward. So, I know, I've talked with Ron, I've talked with Kelly about this, and our recommendation is that we adjust our interest rate to be prime plus 3%.
Let me add just a little bit to Matt's presentation there. So, we do collect a lot of SDCs, and we have a lot of developers that use this system. And Matt's right, we're not a bank. So, for us to track that, it becomes really extensive. When we get to doing a new SDC update, we'll likely put a clause in there that we're not doing, or at least recommend, that we don't do that anymore, except for individual houses, and where I can think of, you know, somebody's failed septic or failed well. Rather than him having to take out a loan, we want to be able to still provide that option to him. But for the world of development, I'm not sure that it makes that much sense, because they can tie it to their bank loan rather than the city being the loan. And it also cuts into our use. If it's a period of 10 years, you look back, that's some of the things that really started this conversation. We started looking at our SDCs, our funds, and Matt says, oh, you don't have that much money there. And I said, no, you're, no, you're wrong, because we've had that much money there for a long time. Well, what it is, is they were putting in what we actually have on an outstanding balance and waiting for that to collect. So, we weren't, we really don't have that cash until we've collected it. So, that's what drove this discussion a little bit, and we came up with this.
Yeah, that was my question. Why are we even doing it for contractors? The homeowners, I get that, but, so...
And we will get to that point when we change that. I think this will, this will change that in and of itself, just because it will be cheaper for them to do that through their bank rather than through us. So, at least that's the hope.
So, that'll be something down the road that you want to do?
Well, the SDC change itself, we didn't want to get too critical with it. For one, we don't have a lot of time to mess with it yet. And until we've gone through a new methodology update on the SDCs, I think we want to incorporate that all into one, in how it looks, rather than just, this was kind of a, hey, we've got to do something now, let's do this now, as kind of an interim gap fix, and then move on to the more permanent solution once we get to the updates.
Questions? Okay, CNN, I have a city attorney. Read your list.
Ordinance Bill number 2020-05, ordinance number 2945, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 13.12.100 of the Lebanon Municipal Code concerning updating the system development charge installment payment interest rate.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'd move second to approve the ordinance Bill number 2945. All those in favor say aye.
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 Does oppose? Your answer is true. Thank you, Matt. City Mayor, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to go through too much of this, just kind of give you a couple of real quick updates on some things that maybe aren't on here or that are. The Reeve School Zone, all the signs are up. We actually had to have the contractor put plastic over them because he got really excited and put them up without the flashing lights. It's like, no, 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 no. But we got them covered. We're just waiting on the flashing lights. I guess they've been backordered, and they're having a heck of a time getting them. So, the word I heard was hopefully sometime this month. So, we'll hopefully get that up, and then when we do, we'll do a pretty big advertising with social media, press release, and then work with the police department to figure that out. But we'll definitely get it out there. So... City Hall Work Session Funding Proposals, we were going to do in March. We may be moving that to April, possibly. I think Matt and I need a little bit more time to go through what our budget looks like before we can really give you a fair assessment of what could be done or what couldn't be done. So, probably going to move that to April, to give you an idea. And along with that, we were probably going to look at some different items that council, for council to prioritize as far as the budget. So, it may be March, it may be April. Stay tuned for that. I'm just kind of giving you a heads up. Finally, we're moving forward with the trail on River Road. I heard that it passed the water pressure test today, the contractor that's been out there, who we really don't... Been there for seven months to install 320 feet of ductile iron water line. Fortunately, he's not working for us. He's working for a developer, but I heard that it passed today. So, hopefully, we can get that covered up and get the signs, the sign bases are in, and we'll be able to open up that trail, once we do that. So...
This is where? I'm sorry.
That's on River Road there at Mount River Drive.
Okay.
Yeah. And with that, I can answer any questions or anything else you've got.
I just wonder if that's all you can do in...
It looks like a lot. It's really not that much.
But we really appreciate your hard work and taking on the extra load that you've taken on. I look at your report, and it just amazes me that you get everything done.
Well, I don't know if we get it all done. We just keep going. We just get up each day and keep going.
It appears to be.
Yeah, something's happening.
Any questions? Okay. Next up, I would like to ask Council.
I have something. So, a couple of months ago, I spoke with Trey about, we have a city ordinance, actually two, loud noise ordinance and the unlawful amplified sound. And sometime back, when this was brought back then, it was adopted with that 50-foot rule, but it got kind of tucked away in the nuisance home piece of it. And so, when I was looking through the ordinance for something else, I thought, well, why do we have to wait for it to be a complete problem childhood house? Why don't we just adopt it for just everything? And so, I just wondered if that was something that we can have Trey look into. I have some documentation that I got, just with some of the verbiage. But I just thought it would be cleaner, and I spoke with the chief to get his opinion on it. He can speak more to it, but I just thought it would be, again, it's a better tools for the officer when they go out to a situation like that, and 50 feet is so much easier to deal with than, okay, hang on, let me go get my decibel meter, which is some arbitrary number. And if you only have one, then you got, you know, just that whole mess. And so, they can just, yep, there's 50 feet. Okay, now we can go deal with this situation. So...
I was waiting for the chief to talk, but since...
Well, I saw you reaching. You were doing this, so I was waiting for you.
Well, I could just say, I remember when we went to the meter, right? And the goal was to make it easier for the officers. So, I'll ask, chief, if it's not easier, we most certainly can make changes, or...
I honestly...
...subjective, you know, I don't know. I don't do it out in the field, so I have no idea.
Yeah, no, I know we're going to sit down and talk tomorrow, and this is one of the things, one of the topics we're going to speak about. But yeah, the decibel meter, it has a purpose, but for more tools in our belt, which we need, is to, you know, the 50-foot rule, 50-foot rule, rule? Rule.
Rule. R-U-L-E. Rule.
It's been a long day. Would actually benefit in our favor to address some of the problematic houses. And like you say, just moving it and cleaning up some verbiage and cleaning up that section in the ordinance would be beneficial. So, there's actually quite a few things we talked about, but that's kind of one of them, yeah. But it's just kind of cleaning up some verbiage in our ordinance.
You having to have a nuisance house there to be able to do work, it's really kind of tied to me.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, it's in there. I'd have to read it to remember exactly the verbiage. But, you know, there's many times we get dispatched to a loud house and or party or something, and having the 50-foot rule, would it help us address that issue rather than running back and getting the decibel meter? I mean, we still do all that, but these things are causing us problems today.
Council, consensus that we should go forward and look at that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you, Kay.
You're welcome.
Thank you, chief. Anything else? CNN, you came in for press. Next scheduled meeting's February 26, the Work Session. It'll be the Council iPad training. And let's see, this, we're going to assess the regular session. We have the executive session after that. We'll take about a five-minute break in the chambers, and we'll leave the meeting.